Call this meeting to order. We have roll call, county commissioners, please raise your right hand.
All right. I'm Mayor PJ Conley, be calling the city's portion to order. I'd like to call on our city clerk for the roll call.
Yes, sir. Mayor PJ Conley.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Monica Daniels. Councilmember Tanya Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Marion Blackburn. Present. Councilmember Matt Scully.
Here.
Councilmember Les Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Portia Willis. Here. Mayor Conley, you're the fourth.
Thank you very much. Like to call on Mayor Pro Tem Monica Daniels for the invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you in the name of Jesus to thank you for another opportunity to come together. So, Father, we pray as we come together tonight. Father, that all things will be done to you for. Father, may we be united in our decisions and respectful in our disagreements. Father, we pray for the sake of all of our citizens and all of us here tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Vice Chair Mayor Perkins Williams, if you will handle the pledge of allegiance.
Please stand. The flag is that way. That's saying you listen to the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
You maintain a motion for approval of the agenda?
Approved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please raise your right hand.
All right. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda? City council?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Motion is made by Mayor Pro Tem Daniels, second by...
Tanya.
Councilmember Foreman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Dis opposed, say nay.
Motion passed, Chair.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I may offer your welcome. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Janice Gallagher, Pitt County's manager. Thrilled to welcome you to this joint meeting between the Board of County Commissioners and City Council this afternoon. We all know that collaboration is the key to success, so it is absolutely wonderful to see the strong partnerships that we've developed here in this room this afternoon. Very briefly, in just a few minutes, we're going to be boarding two 30-passenger buses to visit the proposed mega site. It will be a drive-through, so you will not be getting out of the vehicle or the bus while we're there, and then we'll ride through the site and bring you right back to this room. After the tour, we'll return here. Councilmembers and commissioners will grab a box dinner from Chick-fil-A, and then we'll proceed with presentations from A to Z on how we got here, current status, proposed vision, and proposed next steps. For efficiency and time, if commissioners and council members would please listen to all the presentations and jot down your questions and comments as we go through, we'll address them all at once at the end. We will leave sufficient time for your questions, comments, and discussions once those presentations have been completed. And then, per city council rules, we'll offer a 30-minute session at the end for public comments prior to adjourning. So at this time, you'll see on the screen the bus that you'll be assigned to and where you'll go. Also note, in front of you is a folder that has your agenda. On the inside flap, you'll see a map. If you'll take that map with you for our tour, that will help guide you where we are and assist in making that tour more meaningful for you. I will pause there. As this meeting continues, on a bus tour, Michael Cowan will lead you to bus one or bus two, depending on where you are assigned. Any questions? Thank you.
With the new business, next we have item A under four. We have a mega site overview, and we have Garrett Wykoff with EDPNC that will begin the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for, to both the commissioners and the town council for having me here today. What I want to do is just, I'll give you a kind of a quick overview of how we got here at the state level, then I'm going to turn it over to Joe Hines, who was part of the engineering team that participated in the study for us, and then I'll come back up and kind of talk a little bit more about the program specifically. So, so the mega site program, recent successes in the state have created significant challenges for us. We've had a number of large project announcements. You know, a number of these sites need large acreage. At the time of working with the General Assembly on such program, we had an all-time record high internally of projects that we were working that we would put into that mega sized, you know, category. Now, what we have found is part of this study, a little bit of a curve ball, but we are now seeing a lot of projects that are billions of dollars of investment and thousands of jobs that maybe not, may not need 1,000 acres, but that's still a trend that we are seeing and we are tracking. Every year, we do a real estate report based on the information that comes in, the RFIs that we at the state level, you know, answer by, from site consultants and companies, and we track all of that information and then put it in a yearly report. And we're getting ready to disperse the 2024 report probably within the next week or so. So we're still seeing that, that level of activity. So the mega site program, MRP, was authorized by the General Assembly in the 2022 budget. The goal was to support and expedite mega site preparation. You know, really, to be honest with you, whether it's a mega site or any other regular, quote-unquote, "regular" project, you know, having a site ready, having product development, whether that's a ready-to-go building, shell building, or land, can really put a community, or at least allows a community to stay in the game. Site selection consultants specifically, you know, they're site eliminators. They're not trying to keep you in. They're looking at sites all across the, you know, particularly North Carolina, as well as the Southeast, all over the place. So the quicker that they can, you know, get a project to fruition and get that CO and start making product, you know, the better it is for them, and that allows whatever particular site they're, they're looking at to stay in that, stay in that competition. The other main factor with the mega site program was to kind of improve our competitive positioning, you know, against other states that we compete with, you know, pretty fiercely for, for projects. There are a number of states, and Joe can speak a little bit more about this, but, you know, Ohio recently, you know, even though Ohio is not in the Southeast, they are one of our biggest competitors. They've really put a lot of effort in their, from a political standpoint, into their economic development efforts. The state of Virginia has recently, you know, recently passed a product development initiative to help communities get product, get sites, get sites ready. South Carolina, Georgia, all of these that we compete very, very fiercely with have some sort of, of a model that's helping their, their communities get sites ready. So what is a definition of a mega site? If I had 10 economic developers in here, site consultants, you'd probably get 10 different answers. But for us, the General Assembly defined it as 1,000, at least 1,000 contiguous acres. That was, that was really all the guidance that they, that they gave us on that. So, you know, other places may look at, oh, it's got to have rail, or it has to have this or that, or be near a port, you know, but for us, this was the definition that was, that was, that was given to us to work with. I think the other thing to remember here is that mega sites, this is a, this is a, you know, we're playing the long game here. You know, you just don't say one day you want to have a mega site and a year, sometimes even five years. You know, do you have a site that's, that's ready to go? Is pad-ready and is marketable? I mean, if you look at, you know, just down the road in Edgecombe County, the Kingsborough site, that site's been in the works for 15-plus years. You know, they've had some wins out there, maybe the project didn't come to fruition, but they kept at it, and they've recently had another large, large announcement, you know, out there. So I think another great example, and kind of what we're looking at, is, you know, the Randolph County Ashboro mega site, where the Toyota EV battery manufacturing plant landed a couple of years ago. You can see here on the map, it's about 1,800 acres located in, right on the border of Randolph and Guilford County in Liberty, North Carolina, approximately 1,800 acres. And, you know, I originally, years ago, worked the first Toyota. It was, then it was the Toyota Mazda. They were going to do a joint effort out there to actually manufacture vehicles. We were the bridesmaid in that, in that endeavor. But when Toyota came back around with the same site consultant that they utilized the first time, they remembered this site, and when they were looking to do their new EV battery facility, this one rose to the top because they had already, you know, a lot of the due diligence, getting it pad-ready, all of that had been, all of that had been done, you know, previously. So it allowed, you know, we may not have won the first one, and actually, the scope of this project, jobs and capital investment, was actually bigger than the, the original project. So we were charged with, you know, basically finding viable mega sites across the state. This does not mean these, you know, I hate, I don't, I do not like to, and I try not to use the word "best." These were, we needed experts, third-party experts, to identify the best or the viable, most viable sites across the state, so we would have something to market when these larger projects come around. So we sent out, we had our own RFP bid process, public bid process. We sent those, that RFP out to a number of, across the entire country, to site consultants, engineering firms, any of those that, that are in that site development world. We ended up getting about 15 responses, narrowed that down, did interviews, and the JLL team that worked Toyota, both Toyota projects, and has a lot of experience in mega sites, they teamed up with Joe Hines and the Timmins Group from an engineering perspective, and then also brought in Nexon Pruitt to perform this third-party analysis. So for us, the report was to include, by statute, we were looking for up to five new sites across the, across the state, based on strengths and weaknesses, suitability to different advanced manufacturing. Part of that was in the study around, you know, the, a site suitability for, whether that's biotech, or agriculture, or aerospace, EV, auto, whatever that may, whatever that may be. And then they were to provide us with a timeline, cost estimates, all of that relative information about, you know, about the, about the site. And then the last, one of the last things we asked the third-party team to do was look at other competitive mega sites, specifically in the Southeast, because that's who we compete with the most, but kind of give us an idea of where these other mega sites are and where they are, you know, in, in their process. So what the JLL team did was basically implemented the same process that they would, if they were hired by a client, to evaluate and recommend and do site selection for them. That's how this was, that's how this was treated. We solicited sites from all across North Carolina via, again, an RFP process with, it went to every, every county, every local EDO across the state. We included our power and all of our, all of our power and rail providers, if they were privy to any, you know, large tracts of land. We also, with the help of Timmins Group, utilizing their proprietary GIS system, they were able to look at, you know, look at the state and identify tracts of land, maybe put those parcels together, you know, try to see if there was some, some options there for, for at least 1,000 contiguous acres. And ultimately, we had about 30, 31 responses across the state that were put through this rigorous process by the site consultant, site consultant team. So with that, that's just kind of a background on how we got here. It was very, you know, it wasn't people in Raleigh, we weren't sitting in an ivory tower, you know, picking which counties or which sites we wanted to, that we thought were best. This really was, we tried to keep it as, as much of an independent third-party analysis. So Joe's going to speak more about the study itself, as well as how that relates to this, the Pitt County site, and then I'll be back up to finish up with, with some of the programmatic things.
Thank you very much, Garrett, for the overview. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, even in the back? All right, sounds good. As Garrett mentioned, my name is Joe Hines. I am a principal with Timmins Group Consulting Engineers. I head up our site selection and economic development practice, and we were part of the evaluation team for this project. For those of you who aren't familiar with us at large, we are a nationwide consulting firm. We do have five offices in North Carolina with over 300 employees, and we do have 1,200 employees nationwide and do work in all 50 states, including a number of site selection projects. And we specialize in a little bit of everything to make sure we can have full product delivery for our clients. One of the things that we're committed to is local government's long-term prosperity. We're not out here identifying sites that you can have rich people go out, lock up, and then try to essentially hold them hostage for future projects. We're committed to local government's success. We're committed to great economic development announcements, great jobs created, and great projects as a whole. Since we formalized our practice in 2007, we've had over $55 billion in project announcements for our clients. Now, we do a lot of work in the data center space, and that's helped accelerate that number, but also 30,000 jobs created as a consulting firm. I personally have been involved in site assessment studies for over 1,200 sites in the Southeast US. We've performed site selection studies in over 200 localities, and we work with site selectors and are site selectors ourselves on behalf of our clients, and we work with localities and states to get their products ready to go. We do a lot of work with Duke and Dominion Energy. We actually identified the original Toyota mega site in Randolph County, the Greensboro Randolph mega site. Garrett and I were on the daily phone calls for that project. I think we did five years' worth of work in five months. But I think a critical lesson learned from that project is even if you lose and come in second and you're a bridesmaid, you still win because you get a significant amount of exposure to that site and you get political motivation to advance the site. We're also involved in energy projects. We just recently had an announcement for Commonwealth Fusion Systems, which is a new energy source out there. It's available, being developed by MIT. So part of why I give you this background is I want to start off at a high level and work our way down to the site, and what really is important to us for a number of different reasons. This is a map of all the electric cooperatives and Duke-owned electrical transmission lines and Dominion-owned transmission lines. Dominion is in the red, Duke is in the light blue and dark blue. The dark blue is the old CPNL system, for those who remember Carolina Power and Light, but the star is where the site is located. And it's interesting because while you have Greenville Utility, you have a confluence of both Dominion and Duke infrastructure. So that gives you a lot of perceived flexibility in the future if you need multiple power sources. So we also looked at the site relative to where all the major infrastructure was, transmission lines, wastewater treatment plants, water treatment plants, and you have excellent proximity to a number of those elements. One of the key elements to our evaluation was total number of property owners that you had to deal with. And with Warehouser, they presented themselves, one single property owner, which is very extremely unusual. The Toyota Randolph mega site, I think we had over 100, we had over 100 parcels and like 83 different landowners. We'll never see another project like that again. Sam Simpson was a real estate agent, his brother was a professional golfer, and he had a little bit of rock star status in the region, and I think that allowed him to go in and have the sweet tea, sit-down porch conversation with a lot of property owners and say, "Look at what we're trying to do," is a good thing for that area. So then the mega site itself, which we just did a tour of the facility, is roughly a little bit less than 1,000 acres in the middle of the site or the property that Warehouser owns. What's important about this is that roughly 1,000 acres or less represents about 0.23%. I'll repeat that, 0.23% of the total landmass in the county. And I'm going to show you some example numbers of how we evaluate sites in terms of tax revenue, and you'll see how that needle really moves, that you can have such a small percentage of the landmass in your locality represent such a huge amount of tax revenue in the future. So a little bit about the process we went through. As Garrett noted, we, we came through and we looked at multiple different sites. 30 sites were actually submitted. We actually had 31 submitted and one pulled out, but 30 sites were put through the vetting process. We conducted 11 site visits, and we ended up choosing seven sites total. Now, I'm sworn to secrecy by EDPNC, we can't tell you which one ranked the highest. Every site has its unique advantages and disadvantages. However, I will say this, this was personally one of my favorite sites, from a workforce perspective, from a multitude of elements, and I really think that it's, it's a great site to be developing on behalf of the, of the localities. The evaluation criteria we looked at were site control and ease of assemblage, one property owner, site size and topography, and ease of permitting and development costs associated with it. One thing about Warehouser is they are very familiar with the industrial game. They were involved with, it was the Volvo facility outside of Moncks Corner in Berkeley, South Carolina. I was at the airport on another client site in another state when Volvo flew off, and they said, "They're coming here." And next thing we know, they're announcing in South Carolina with Governor Nikki Haley at the time. But Warehouser, because they own so much land, were able to deal with some mitigation issues that you wouldn't have been able to deal with otherwise in that process. So they're an excellent industrial partner when it comes to projects like that, and I think that certainly is a huge advantage, because it's not just their saying, "We're going to do it," as they have a track record of actually doing it and a record with Corps of Engineers and all the appropriate Department of Environmental Quality people. We looked at power, we looked at water and wastewater capacity. You have the luxury of having two very significant water and wastewater treatment facilities that really matter when it comes to this. We look at natural gas, roadway access, you have excellent proximity to a four-lane road, railway access, air and port accessibility, and then labor availability. And the labor availability is very important because if you don't have the labor available today, and sometimes that's kind of like the, the reason why you didn't get the prom date with site selectors is, "Oh, well, you didn't have the workforce." Okay, that's fine. I can move workforce to a site or train workforce near a site a lot easier than I move a good site to the workforce. And you have such a cool community here. I mean, it's between the schools, between, you have this really cool, coolness factor, and you got proximity to Raleigh, several other places that, that if you're somebody in Ohio looking to move down here like one of your board members, you aren't going to hesitate to move because you have a lot of community assets that you look for when you pack up and move. The other element that we looked at was, as Garrett mentioned, was the mega project announcements that are taking place. And we look back on the five-year history prior to the study in 2023, and we evaluated 60 mega project announcements. We looked at aerospace, auto manufacturing, EV battery, clean energy, alternative energy, food processing, life sciences, and semiconductors. And as Garrett noted, you know, these are some plot charts up there, and they're a little bit difficult to see, but if you take a close look at them and what's actually in the report, you can see that actually a large announcement in terms of billions of dollars and thousands of jobs created doesn't necessarily need 1,000-plus acre site. We've seen them go in as low as 300 acres or less. The example of Toyota, when I was riding the site with the engineer from Toyota, he said, "Well, really, all we need is 300 acres." I said, "Okay, well, why are y'all asking for 1,000?" He said, "We want a little bit of buffer, but site selector said we should ask for 1,000, even though we only need 300." So, you know, that's a game that you kind of have to play with site selectors, and they'll use those eliminating criterias as, you know, "Hey, is this site actually 1,000 acres or not? 500 acres or not? Do you have adequate buffers?" Because Toyota was extremely sensitive to being a good neighbor and did not want to be a bad neighbor for the residents near Liberty, North Carolina as well. And this is the range of, of the evaluation that we did in the study in terms of investment, announced jobs, facility size, acreage, power, water, sewer, and natural gas requirements. As Garrett mentioned, we had to look in the context of what were, what was going on with other mega sites throughout the Southeast. I currently sit on the Southern Economic Development Council Board Leadership Team, which covers 17 states, and what we call the American South, which is the 17 southern states, represents the third-largest economy in the world. Third-largest economy in the world, okay? So we're in a very robust region of the world, and that's good for a couple of different reasons. One, companies do not mind moving here. If you read the Wall Street Journal, which I read, I try to read every day, you're seeing big announcements like shipping companies saying, "Hey, we're going to reinvest multiple billions of dollars back into the United States right now with the current administration." So we're starting to see that shift coming back to the United States. Also, supplier park really matters, and supplier park matters from the standpoint that, that essentially you have to be able to supply the companies that need the work. Toyota had multiple, multiple people locking up 100-plus acre sites in and around the area because they told their suppliers, "You need to be able to be within two hours in my facility, and you need to be able to deliver my product, i.e. like the fenders or the transmissions or the struts. You need to be able to deliver it as I'm putting it into my vehicle." So that really matters. The other thing is the energy story. This is where we have all the mega site, mega sites throughout Southeast, and this was in August of 2023, and where they relate to the energy infrastructure. The red is electrical transmission, and the brown is natural gas transmission. And then we did a two-hour drive time analysis, because that's a critical element, and you can see how the Southeast is kind of filled in in terms of that supplier park, and that really does matter when it comes to the project. So the other elements we looked at, what made this site attractive was 1,000-plus acres available today. The zoning, we can, we can rezone a piece of property relatively easy. We can't, we can't move it to an interstate, and we can't move it to an electrical transmission line that easy. We have a four-lane highway nearby, Interstate 95 not too far away, and then future Interstate I-87 not too far away, and you have great proximity to the ports. Water and sewer, natural gas, one utility provider, which is very unusual for all those elements, and very helpful. Then, as I mentioned, distance to the ports. The Norfolk Port is the third-largest port on the East Coast. Wilmington is a very good niche port, but it will only at best be about 10% of the size of the Jane Ports. So you have the best of both worlds because you have access to that in addition to Morehead City. And then you have access to pretty commercially viable airports within a reasonable drive time. So again, going back to what are the site strengths, single property owner, the property's been well-maintained. We have a lot of clients who will cut a bunch of trees off, and they'll let them sit out there, and the wetlands will expand. There's all kinds of issues to it. The fact you have a landowner who does this full-time for a living is an exceptional element to this that makes life a little bit easier, because as Garrett mentioned, it could be 10 to 15 years before you ultimately have an announcement. We hope not that long for this particular site if you all decide to move forward, and obviously you have to make a decision about that. You have significant water and sewer capacity relative to all the other sites, significant power, natural gas, flat, relative proximity, relative airports. The site weaknesses, and there really weren't that many, to be quite frank, relative to the other sites, were the environmental features and potential permitting challenges, and then rail service, you're going to have to bring it in from the north, but if you do bring it in from the north, you actually cross Warehouser property. So it's going to be a little bit easier to acquire those easements if you have a cooperative landowner. So some of the recommended infrastructure improvements that we looked at, so we had to evaluate each site relative to one number another, and we called it order of magnitude of development cost. So looking at the overall picture of here, we need to complete the due diligence studies. Let's find out where the wetlands are. Let's go ahead and do geotechnical reports. Let's, let's do what the site eliminators usually are for a prospect to make sure that we don't have any fatal flaws or deal killers out there. And that's what the state money is available for, is to help with that due diligence, and then we can make the recommended improvements in cost, but that would be potentially an interchange and/or four-lane access, and you can phase that in so you don't have to do an interchange upfront. You can maybe do a signaled intersection, a dedicated water line and sewer line to serve the site. We would recommend a 2 million gallon elevated storage tank to ensure pressure's there, and then a dedicated wastewater pump station and force main. So when we looked at totality of costs, and again, these order of magnitude, we met with NCDOT and looked at the potential transportation costs, because that's probably your biggest nugget here. Then we looked at water of running water line and sewer lines, due diligence studies, and then what we consider pad-ready site, which was about 500 acres of a site that you can go pad-ready. In some cases, we recommend it, and in some, we don't, but we basically have to do a side-by-side comparison. That gave us an all-in cost of about $450 million. Now, there are two ways to look at the funding for this. One is you have the funding that you can do to get the site ready to go in the eyes of the industry. So that's pre-prospect showing up. When the prospect shows up, much like the Toyota project, there's a whole nother pools of money that open up. In other words, you don't have to build an interchange until they absolutely need it. And then, depending... And then depending upon the investment in state and then the jobs created, you can make a financial decision, okay, is this multi-billion-dollar investment going to generate the tax revenue to justify putting this ninety-million-dollar interchange in? So those are some decisions that can be made as you're going through the prospect recruitment side of things, once you have a unknown. And I look at it like pre-planning is kind of like the UNC or Duke basketball team, whichever fan you are, or NC State, because I'm an NC State guy. What'd you say? Or ECU, yes, yes, that's right. Maybe I should have used baseball analogy, not basketball analogy for ECU. But this is preparing during the week, practice during the week for the tip-off, or football, same thing. And then as soon as, as soon as the tip-off happens or as soon as kickoff happens or as soon as first pitch happens, you're in a game time situation where you have defined competition, you have to make smart, not just smart, but publicly defendable. And keyword, there's publicly defendable decisions because you are elected to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. Okay? So that's the most important thing is get you to a point where you can make smart decisions because no deal is better than a bad deal. And you want to know where that threshold is that takes you from a good deal to a bad deal. And I can assure you this much, every site selector will ask you to give up everything in your firstborn if you let them. So you need to know where to take your stand and you need to know what it's worth to you and your community for this particular prospect when they're there. So that's kind of how we look at that from that element. So going back to the comparison between the different sites, the Edgecombe site, which is taken off the market, is not here, and that was a fully mature site. But when you look at cost relative, and that's cost relative, keyword is relative, to all the six sites that made it into the top list, we had roughly four hundred fifty-one million dollars of all-in development costs. And again, that is a mature project. You don't have to spend that upfront, nowhere near that upfront. But when we compared that to full buildout of all the other sites, this ended up being one of the most cost-effective sites within the study. And that's part of why I think it's a great site, not just from the cost-effect in the standpoint, but because you have one of the better labor stories to go with that for all these sites that we had to evaluate. Then when we look at that, this was a map that Garrett and I put together after the report was done because a lot of people were saying, well, why do we have an abundance of sites over in the eastern part of the state? We just had a glut of announcements in central North Carolina between VinDass, Wolfspeed, and Toyota. And after meeting with the labor people at NC State, in particular Tom White and Jeff DeBellas, I believe, who works for North Carolina Department of Commerce, they were talking about there's a little bit of a unique feature when mega sites start clustering together, workforce, qualified workforce starts clustering together. So you have to think about the spousal support jobs, like say if somebody's going to move here from Ohio or Alabama or Japan, for that matter, is there an opportunity for a spouse to have a job elsewhere nearby? And so that's what makes this a pretty unique part of the state. So we laid this out as a two-hour radius, and this is a everybody-wins map because a lot of rural localities will take the fifty-million-dollar supplier, hundred-and-fifty jobs, bunches singles, all day long, right? So that's one of the benefits is not just the direct revenue from this site, but you also get the supplier component of this, and that fills itself in. And when you look at this map, a two-hour drive time radius of recent announcements and potentially future mega site announcements, we cover roughly ninety-eight percent of the state. The other advantage you have is your proximity to the interstate that gets you to the Norfolk Port. Again, that's the third-largest port on the East Coast, next to Georgia and next to New York, New Jersey, okay? And Charleston's kind of close behind that. But you have a very unique advantage over the rest of the mega sites and the rest of Southeast from that front. So let's go back to tax revenue, okay? How do we evaluate this from, you know, it's sexy to talk about the project, but when it comes down to it, romance is nice, but finance is what gets the job done, right? Okay, so we had to look at this at the lens of, if we were to have a multi-billion-dollar investment, what is a realistic multi-billion-dollar investment? What is your depreciation schedule? The first to claim, I'm not an accountant, but generally speaking, I'm an engineer, I understand numbers well enough, and I did go get an MBA, to understand how you evaluate depreciation, life of facilities and elements like that. So we looked at a five-billion-dollar investment, we looked at an average wage of eighty-five thousand dollars, which is a good mix for the technology industries that are out there, and then an average depreciation on essentially the North Carolina Department of Revenue, ten-year depreciation scale. So when you look at these numbers, you have to think about it two ways. You have to think about it as, what is it going to generate in potential tax revenue? And that's both real estate and business personal property tax. Real estate has a tendency to go up over time, business personal property depreciate the assets over time, and so that's got a sixty-two-point-seven percent factor associated with it. Then the real estate investments can be X dollars per square foot. Then business personal property, which is machines and equipment and all those elements will be another investment, and those are usually a higher dollar per square foot investment. Important thing to point out here, this does not include water and sewer investments. So if somebody comes in and needs a million gallons a day of water and sewer, your utility gets to recoup that as an enterprise in terms of the cost. So that can help pay for any upgrades to the treatment plants, any upgrades for the pipelines. But we look at this in terms of what does the annual revenue give you? And this is assuming like, say, phase one, a five-billion-dollar investment, roughly two and a half million square feet, can generate roughly twenty-one million dollars in your annual tax revenue. So when you look at what you can borrow against that tax revenue to build community facilities, to build fire stations, to build schools, to build different elements within those community facilities, you can borrow that money at four percent interest for a twenty-year bond, thirty, thirty years at four and a half percent interest, and that gives you bonding capacity ranging anywhere from two-hundred-and-eighty-eight million dollars to three-hundred-and-forty-four million dollars. So that's kind of the way we look at it. So why invest in this mega site? Well, first of all, it was a top mega site out of the thirty that we evaluated, okay? And Garrett mentioned that we looked at other sites, and we didn't find any other sites we felt like rose to the top, top seven sites in the state of North Carolina. It's a great workforce story. You have a reasonable infrastructure investment relative to the other mega sites. I think the Toyota project site is close to a billion dollars in site and infrastructure investment within itself, and they're continuing to spend money on that from what I understand. You've got a regional supply chain development story, but more importantly, it's missed opportunities. Eli Lilly announced on February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, that they're reshoring a lot of their production, okay? They had invested twenty-three billion between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-four, and they're saying we're going to more than double that investment. One of their major facilities is outside of Concord, North Carolina. They might have one in Ohio, too, I believe. But if you don't have a site ready to go, you don't get to capture those opportunities. So you're, you're kind of left in the way. Garrett mentioned the Toyota project. That is a project that's a gift that keeps on giving. And we're kind of way, we're lucky we were the bridesmaid to the first project because that project hadn't grown near as much as this Toyota EV project has. And within roughly, what, twenty-four months of the announcement, Garrett, they were up to thirteen-point-nine billion, almost fourteen billion in announcements, and there were five thousand jobs created. So once these projects show up, they start to accelerate, and that's the most important thing to keep in mind as you continue to evaluate whether this is a good fit for your community and your residents as well as for the region. Garrett? And thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joe. I think Joe brings up another great point that sometimes gets overlooked, and we saw it with the Edgecombe County mega site, was that they were having, because they're one of few that are out there across the country, it gave them the ability to kind of pick and choose what they wanted in their community. They had a number of projects reach out to them that maybe, you know, for them weren't the, weren't the right fit. So, you know, having something ready allowed them to kind of, you know, as a community, step back and say, do we really want this industry, you know, here? Or, because they knew that ultimately they have, they had a gem and somebody, you know, some, there was always going to be interest, interest in it. So I think that's something that's important that cannot be overlooked as, as well. So I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as possible. A lot of it, you know, these are, these are, a lot of this is guidelines and just basic program stuff that's on our website. I'm happy to provide it to Michael and others to get it out to everybody, but I really don't want to lose y'all and bore you to tears. But so in that original twenty-twenty-two budget allocation from the General Assembly, we were authorized a million dollars to do this study. So that was, that was completed. From presenting this study to Senate and House leadership, we were able to secure ten million dollars for the twenty-three, twenty-four year for site development activity, and then nearly another hundred million dollars for actual site development. Joe made a good point in there is that, you know, five of the seven sites that were identified in this study were, were totally new. And in some cases, the landowners weren't even, you know, weren't even privy to that their community put the site in to be reviewed. So we don't, you know, so the site was evaluated for all of these criteria, but until someone gets out there and does the site development work to see if the land even perks, you know, and we did not want to be, you know, kind of both at the unit of local government level, the state level, pushing forward a site that just keeps on, you know, costs keep on adding, adding up. So our, the first allocation of money is around due diligence so we can, you know, get in there and make sure, you know, we do all these, these studies to see if the, the land is even viable for industrial, industrial manufacturing projects. So like I said, the study, we identified seven sites from this study. Two of them are sites that have been marketed for years, the Edgecombe County mega site as well as the mega site down in Brunswick County. The other five, Pitt, Nash, Wilson, Rowan, and Cumberland, were all new, all newly identified sites. So you fall into that group of, you know, kind of, you know, your, the other two sites obviously have a little bit of, or a big head start, but from those five new sites that were identified, you're kind of all in that, all in that same boat in trying to see if you, if you'd like to move forward with it and do the due diligence. So again, you know, our purpose was to assist local governments with site acquisition, due diligence, and actual site, site development and planning for, for an installation of public infrastructure. So, yeah, again, you know, the other, some of the other program purposes was to, you know, kind of evaluate and get a cost of what the development of this site would be. Joe alluded to it with Toyota. We went into, when, you know, as we were negotiating and working through that project, it was coming in at about three hundred and fifty million dollars to get the site ready, pad-ready. We stand right now at almost a billion dollars. And that was a lot of the motivation for this program and talking with Senator Berger and others was that, you know, can, can we not have something that looks at these things upfront so we're not kind of blindsided at the, at the back end? After we announce a project and you get out there and there's all this rock that needs to be blasted and all these other things to get it, to get it ready. So that was a lot of the, a lot of the main purpose. And then lastly, you know, we've brought in partners from DEQ, from DOT, our power and rail providers, they're all kind of part of our internal working group. And this, you know, this way, we kind of felt like it gets us all on the same page. We're all rowing together, we're all aware of the specific needs and can help guide a community, you know, kind of through the, this, this entire, entire process. So really, it's, it's a pretty simple, simple program, much like, you know, grant administrative programs, utility programs at the Department of Commerce. We have an application process. It's really as simple, the, the only applicants can be these seven communities, the ones that were named in the, in the study. The applicant must be a unit of local government, much like everything else at the, at the Department of Commerce. And, you know, a government, we also include partnerships in there as we know some of the EDOs across the state are private or a public-private entity. So those, those folks are eligible as, as well. So the applicant must either own the property or have a sales contract or an option agreement to purchase the property to, to be eligible. For a, for the due diligence funding, we are requiring an option, at least an option of, of at least two years. For the site development portion, if we, if you, if everybody agrees to move further, then that would be an option of at least five years after the grant reward. What we're trying to avoid here, and we see this all the time with projects, you know, we're talking with a, you know, a community or a landowner about an industrial project, they may find out who it is. That's why a lot of these projects are confidential. And what was, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty-five thousand an acre, all of a sudden becomes a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre. So we're not necessarily trying to make anybody, you know, rich off of this program, but we understand that, you know, we've got to have some options so we can get in there and, and start doing the, doing the due diligence or if we're going to move some, move some earth. And lastly, the applicant must demonstrate that the property is zoned for economic, economic development, some kind of manufacturing designation, industrial designation. So some of the eligible purposes, there are four main purposes. Again, I'm not going to go over this again, site due diligence. We will pay for, you can, the community can make grant application for, and this is just a small list. We've got a whole laundry list of items that, around due diligence that we would consider as, as part or eligible costs as, as we do this site analysis. You can see just a few here. We have even approved with some other communities workforce studies to help them kind of try to capture or be able to explain that story more, better for them. So again, there's a whole host of these. I just added a few on here to kind of give you an idea of, of the reports and the analysis that this program pays for. Site acquisition, this falls under the, that second tier, that second pot of money, the ninety-seven-point-eight. Again, have to have an option or an offer to purchase. All the basic due diligence must be, must be completed. There has to be a demonstration that the funds available and willingness to pay for the, the balance of the acquisition costs. As it stands now with the statute, the maximum amount that we can award is lesser of eighty-five percent of either the purchase price of the property or the tax value of the property, much like, you know, other programs at the state level with grants. We, you know, at the state level, they want to see that the locals have some skin in, in the game. Public infrastructure, the infrastructure, it must be publicly owned to meet the, you know, needs of the prospective employer. So we can, you know, anything that's water, sewer-related, could be public utility, electricity, some, something of that nature. Those are all eligible costs that can be upgraded or, or installed with these, with these grant funds. And then lastly is the onsite preparation. Whatever is entailed in getting this, a particular site, the clearing, the grading, to get it pad-ready, what we consider pad-ready. So when a company comes in, they get their, they do all their permitting locally, they can start, you know, they can start putting up their, their, their facility as, as quickly, as quickly as possible. But we, the great money that we have can help with, with, with those costs. So we are on a, we have four different funding cycles throughout the year. This is really maybe too much in the weeds, but just to give you an idea, the EDPNC board must approve every application. From there, it goes to the Economic Investment Committee at the Department of Commerce. Our, these are, on the left side is when applications are due. On the right side here is when, these are the dates for twenty-twenty-five that the EDPNC board meets and makes their recommendations. And then basically what we do, you know, it's a pretty simple process. We, once we get, receive a grant application, we evaluate that per program guidelines, we recommend approval or non-approval, partial approval, denial. recommend approval or non-approval, partial approval, denial to our, there's a mega site subcommittee within the board. So that's my first level of, of due diligence. From there, if they approve it, we go to the, go to full board and, and try to get approval there. And then we go to the, the Economic Investment Committee. They have to have, the EIC at Commerce, in the grant agreements, they, they are required by statute to approve the language that is in those, that is in that grant agreement with a particular community. Just real quick, so to kind of give you guys or this body an idea of where we stand. So we really were open for business kind of towards the, the middle of, of last year. So, but we've received to date from the mega site program, we've made three grant awards, one to Edgcombe County for the Kingsborough mega site for site due diligence for just under 300,000. And then in, in, in helping to win Project Neptune, that's the Natron project that they announced early this summer, we put in 29.7 million dollars for that, for that site due diligence. And then Brunswick County is the other community to date, mega site community to date that has requested, you can see there, just a little under 250,000 dollars in, in site due diligence funds. What I, what I've got here under category and cat, category one and category two, this isn't anything, you know, kind of scientific or anything, but just as I'm speaking with these communities and working with communities on product development of all sizes, I, you know, and this is my opinion, I would place Nash and Pitt, you know, not, not all five of these mega sites. I would be hard pressed to think that all five of these mega sites are eventually going to come to fruition. As it stands now, I think that Nash and Pitt are the, are, have shown the most planning, strategy, forethought in, in moving, you know, if so choose, in moving this process forward. I would say that, you know, there's, you know, in, in talking with our friends in Wilson, that site's got about 18 landowners. It's going to be very difficult to get them all, you know, to agree. And they may have some other ideas, what they want to do there. And, you know, I would say the next one that, that probably has the best chance to come to fruition is the, the site that was identified in Fayetteville in Cumberland County. But I say that to try to give, at least give you all as a, you know, governing body, some confidence that, you know, I think there's a great team between the Greenville Alliance and my relationship, our relationship with Kelly, with Pitt County, with Warehouser, they know what they're doing, they have done development like this before, them being one owner. I think if, if there's, and then I think we've got a great workforce study here. That's, that's huge with these companies, you know, a lot of people focus on incentives and things like that, but once you have product, and I'm stealing this, I wish this was my line, no product, no project. Once you have product and you get projects, then comes those questions around, you know, workforce, housing, you know, a number of, of other things before you even get to the, that incentives discussion. It's going to come, but it's, there's other things that are being evaluated about your site or a particular site. So just wanted to give you all some confidence there in the, in the teams that you have that, you know, I really, you know, of these five new or identified sites, I really feel like, you know, I'd probably put Pitt ahead of Nash, but I was putting them in alphabetical order, but have the most chance to, to succeed here. So, but with that, I know Joe and I, did you want to do questions for our group now or did you want to wait for everybody to go?
[inaudible]
Oh. Oh, a summary. Important. So I would give you, based on our project activity at the EDPNC and the amount of projects we're working and the level of project we're working, we continue, you know, we have been for a long time. We were named the number one state for doing business two years in a row. We would have wanted a third year in a row if they hadn't changed the criteria and gave it to Virginia. But we're well poised for continued investment and being targeted by, by industries. They are looking at, you know, not just the southeast, but, but North Carolina significantly because of our, a lot of the great things that we have that we can, we can sell to them from a business standpoint. You know, we need to provide critical, critical sites and infrastructure for, you know, for when those needs need to be met, when people come, companies and site consultants come asking about opportunities that are out there. Again, many of our, you know, competitors, I, I say this a lot, whether, you know, I, I personally agree with incentives. If one's doing it, you kind of, you kind of all have to be, you know, kind of, kind of doing it, you know, to be able to, to compete. And that's kind of how I feel about product development, specifically the mega site program. Again, this is normally a five to maybe 15-year process. So really, the decisions you're making today as a, as a board, as a council, you know, you might not see, you know, that immediately, but you're setting your community up for a, a, a long-term investment. And that, you know, just in general, I think what we learned from the study was that, you know, North Carolina as a state needs to be committed to these initiatives and, and assist our local governments as much as possible because you can, you know, you can see from those numbers, it's, it's an expensive, it can be an expensive endeavor. So, all right. Thank you all.
I think we'll wait till the very end.
We're going to have a lot of presentations. Again, just depending on what everybody wants to do, but it seems like this is kind of its own section, and I've already got a few questions.
Ask questions or take a break?
I, I like, I like to ask some questions before we get, because we've got other, other presentations that are going to take us more in detail. I'd like to get some things cleared up before we go further in detail, if that's possible. But it depends on the, you know, well of the.
Go ahead, ask away.
All right. Thank you. So just going through the presentation, these are quick. Some of the site weaknesses were environmental features and potential permitting challenges. Does that have to do with the wetlands, blue line streams, that kind of thing? What are the potential weaknesses?
Yes, those are, those are illness, just because you do have a lot of blue line streams out there. There's one thing to be doing with speculatively, there's another thing to be doing with legitimate project, Volvo project in South Carolina was a perfect example. I think you ought to mitigate, I don't know, was it 260 something acres of wetlands? And you all were able to do that on large tracts of land you own in Old Square. So from a conventional perspective, yes. From a partnership perspective, not really, because we have a Ruddy and Willen partner and Corps of Engineers views favorably upon a legitimate project, not a speculative project. A speculative project would be saying, I'm going to build a 500,000 square foot shell building where I have no prospect.
So when we talk about wetlands, I mean, do they have to necessarily be mitigated? Or they can often be worked with, for instance, at our Sub Parkway, I think we've done a really good job out there.
You can do both, part of it depends on the Corps of Engineers regulator at the time, and part of it depends on the project.
Okay. That's good. That gets the deep, the level of detail I needed. Y'all, I have a master's of public administration, I've never heard order of magnitude development costs. Can you tell me what that is briefly? Not the wonky definition, just the brief definition.
No, no, no. So what we had to do was come up, so first of all, as an engineer, to get true costs of what you've gone into a project, you have to do a preliminary engineering report. We didn't have the money or the time to go do a preliminary engineering report for each one of these sites. So we used general rule of thumbs, X number of feet for a 24-inch water line, X number of dollars a feet for 24-inch water line or sewer line, pump station, stuff that we see on a regular basis is what the current market is. We also met with NCDOT and we said, okay, what are you seeing as legitimate cost for an interchange? What are you seeing as legitimate per mile or per foot cost for a two-lane or four-lane road? And we, we developed what we call these order magnitudes, which are intended to be conservative. Okay? So they're not intended to be like right down to the, you know, take the nut off the tire and look at it and put it back on. And partly because, like I say, for sewer pump station, we might know a pump station's nearby, but we don't know what the capacity of that pump station is, we aren't fully engaging utility. So we try to get these numbers to what we consider relative and conservative so that way if it's, if we think it's 450 million dollars today, if you were pulling the trigger on that project today, it should be 450 million dollars or less.
Is it kind of a rough estimate based on what you're seeing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good.
But an educated estimate.
Educated estimate, okay. Yes, that one you answered. Okay, so to make our application, we will need to either own the property or have a sales contract with a couple of years' option?
Yes, ma'am.
And then the grants we apply for or for some of that due diligence work? Due diligence and site preparation, is that right?
Correct. That's the, that's the first, kind of the first phase.
Okay.
Because I think what we're, again, what we're trying to get at is that, you know, if we can, if we can pay for that and figure out if the site is, continues to remain viable, and I don't have any reason why not to think this particular one is, but for any of the sites, say it's not, at that point, we can all walk away. No more, I mean, we won't spend any more taxpayer dollars, we'll have educated reports to tell us, eh, this may not be the, you know, the soil compaction or whatever it is, it's just not the right, you know, it just doesn't work here, then, you know, we're not, you know, both from a local government and in the state, just kind of continuing to dump money into something that, you know, may not be right. So that's kind of our, you know, that's, that's our starting point. That's the gate opener, is the due diligence.
Thank you. That's all my questions, appreciate it.
I do want to make one comment about that. So when I get the call from the prospects engineer saying, tell me what are my permitting challenges, tell me what are my potential development costs, tell me what are my subsurface conditions, whether it's subsurface groundwater, what kind of soils do you have, I have to be able, as a professional, I have to be able to give him legitimate answers. So a lot of the due diligence items are checking the box on what a prospects engineer would need to either build out the infrastructure or build out the site. So they can put certainty, both transactional certainty, like we require an ALTA, American Land Transfer Title Association, survey, which has like a 50 or 60-year title history to it, so there's no issues with an old NCDOT right of way, having to properly vacate it or electric right of way. So it's almost like that. So transactional risk, permitting risk, which is time, okay? And then cost risk. And I'll give you an example, we were putting into Amazon million-square-foot facilities, they were going to be doing time of year construction when it was really, really wet, and they had to condition the soil. And they said, okay, if we need stone dust, 300,000 tons of stone dust for each facility, if we have to undercut the entire thing, do we have quarries nearby who can deliver that? And we went and got quotes from the two local quarries for these facilities, and they put that $3 million for one, $3.5 million for other into their business model so they could put certainty, the key word there is certainty, into their evaluation model. Now, in terms of landowner prices are concerned, as Garrett mentioned, you don't want the price to go up overnight, I have seen multiple and multiple large projects where a landowner thought a deal was imminent, and they quadrupled their price literally overnight for a key piece of property. So that's why they're requiring a lockdown agreement on those prices, because you as localities control the fate of that project, both infrastructure development, extending water and sewer to it, and both land use entitlements.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Our next is a review of the Pitt County, proposed Pitt County site, and I'll ask Tim Jackson, Warehouser, Scott Anderson from Arkansas.
Super. Thank you. Thank you very much. When, when Janice and Michael and Josh were first talking with us about moving this proposal forward, the group thought it was pretty important to have an example of what this purple blob might look like, you know, to visualize it if, when it gets developed. So we're going to show you just one example of that. Now, you, you're familiar with where it is in the region. It's, it's really six, seven miles north of City Hall and the county courthouse, that's really where it is. It's about a mile to two miles west of Highway 11. Within the, the Warehouser holding, it's at the south end of this working force, and you can see the Warehouser property boundary. So it's completely, this is the 1,000-acre mega site, completely within Warehouser's holdings. And then here's a, just one example of what it might look like on this site. Joe and Garrett talked about the range of facilities and, and plants that could go here that would be fit the mega site definition. This is an example of a very large automobile manufacturer on this site. Couple of things to note. One is, there's a, on that site, there's a, a, you know, there's a footprint of large buildings, of parking areas, and a significant amount of land that is still open space and undeveloped as, as retention ponds. So it's, when you think of a mega site, it's not take 1,000 acres and cover every bit of it with a building or pavement. It's actually worked that into, responsibly, into the 1,000-acre site. The second real characteristic here to see is a new access road. It really is a requirement for developing this mega site, is to build a new roadway from that site out to Highway 11 so that the employees coming to and from there, the trucks coming to and from there can get there directly to Highway 11, not be a part of the traffic on the existing roadways. So this is just one example, but we thought it was helpful to, to see that. And Scott's going to talk about, so what if we also developed additional employment around this mega site?
Thank you, Tim. As Tim mentioned, we have looked at the 1,000-acre mega site, we've talked a lot about the 1,000-acre mega site. But in addition to that, as we mentioned earlier, there'll be a lot of other support services, other industries that will want to relocate to this area as well. And as such, the area that's outlined in red around the perimeter, that area is totals about 3,000 acres. And so that's what we would be coming to you to request is a rezoning of approximately 3,000 acres. Again, this boundary is about two miles wide, two and a half miles high. And again, all of that that would be included in the rezoning request is currently owned by Warehouser, so we're still dealing with just one property owner. The lines that we've drawn for this rezoning request have been very carefully chosen. We have made sure that those lines have a minimum of a 500-foot buffer from any existing residential use. We wanted to make sure that we were good neighbors and provided good buffers and boundaries from any existing residential property. In addition, we're proposing to create a conservation overlay district in the county. This would allow us to create a minimum of 100-foot buffer that would be along any property that is not adjacent to Warehouser-owned property. The board in the back right corner and is also in the insert of your notebooks, has three lines on there around the perimeter of this property. There's a 500-foot offset, 1,000-foot offset, and a 2,000-foot offset. So if you're curious as to where a property is in relationship to the rezoning request, that's hopefully to give you a better sense of scale. When we're talking about a project of this size, you know, on a, on an eight and a half by 11 or 11 by 17 piece of paper, it's hard sometimes to visualize what that, that spacing is. So that's in there to give you that kind of reference, and hopefully that helps to make it a little clearer for you. So this is expanding on the 1,000-acre mega site with the full 3,000-acre development. We've kind of sketched in here a couple of sites that you may be familiar with. And this bottom northeast corner is Thermo Fisher. So right across the street, this area here is a project that is the same size as what Thermo Fisher is. We envision moving to the south and west. We'd have some of those ancillary support services, some warehouses, some other smaller industries that would support the mega site. As you move up to the north and the west, these sites in this area are similar size and scale to what's currently in the Endogreen Industrial Park. And in this top northeast, northwest corner is Grady White Boats. So like I said, it's a large facility here that most people are familiar with. So like I said, it's a large facility here that most people are familiar with, but that just gives you a sense of scale as to how that would fit on the site. And then along the north, we envision that developing into some type of technology research property. So this would be smaller-scale offices, research labs. Again, all of this is to support your mega site. And again, as Tim mentioned, have a new access road along the east side of the property to connect back to Highway 11. One of the other features of this site, again, is a lot of undisperved, undisturbed green buffers around the perimeter. So we've offset the access road into that rezoning area to be able to leave an undisturbed buffer to the east, and again, undisturbed buffers to the west. And again, as we took our tour earlier, this was the tour route, and for those who weren't able to go on the tour, we've got just a quick video that shows kind of the aerial view of the site. So this is looking north of Saintsville Road, which bisects the property. Again, this is currently an active farm timber production property. The ages of that timber growth range from zero to 24 years. And Warehouser has a routine program for cutting different parcels out of that. This is looking to the south of Saintsville Road. And then, just for fun, we looked at, okay, what else is there beyond this? Obviously, with this scale and size of industrial, it's going to generate a lot of new jobs, a lot of new people, a lot of new employees, which generates the need for, for housing, for grocery shopping, all of those things. So these yellow pods, as you move north, is additional Warehouser land. Again, Warehouser owns approximately 10,000 acres. This would be areas that's available for residential development. And there's also a, what we call the green spine, that runs through here that gives us opportunities for greenways, for natural areas, and is additional part of this development. Again, this picture that you're seeing here is not really on the table for you to consider tonight. This is just, again, what could come along with this existing development. Again, I know some of these are maybe hard to see at the scale on the room, so we've also got boards printed around the room. So if you'd like to look at those after the presentation, they'll be available for you. And I'll now hand it over to Tony Cannon.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Tony Cannon. I'm the general manager, CEO at Greenwood Utilities. And Joe did such a fine job covering our utility capacity, and I'm going to move through this fairly quickly. Also, the mayor threatened me if I didn't, so want to make sure we do that. So we're going to start with electric, and I'm going to just hit the highlights here. So some of you may have noticed those shiny new poles out in front of the school that turn down and go down Highway 903 back out to the industrial park. That's an electric transmission line. We are very fortunate to be constructing that line while we're looking at this site. So right now, our active transmission line is about two miles away. This will put us within a mile. This line will put us within a mile of that. For the initial build, you know, we're looking at having to extend the transmission line to the site. Like I said, just a little bit under a mile, build a substation. For the initial build, we're looking probably around $10 million to get electricity to the site and be able to serve a customer. What we worked with the Timmons Group on, with Joe and his crowd, was, you know, what happens at total buildout? So when we look at this at total buildout, you know, we would have to build redundant transmission in there. We would want to loop in there with radio feeds, also with the ability to backfeed the site with multiple substations. So we think that'll be somewhere around $72 million. That cost is not in the, in the presentation that Joe did. Natural gas, we are completing a project right now to an industrial customer that would put us within about two miles of the site. So we have adequate capacity for both electric and natural gas fairly close to the site. So once we would have an active project, we can get here fairly quickly. We also have a liquefied natural gas plant, which serves as a peak shaving plant, but also as additional capacity that we're able to feed into the lines that would feed the site. We operate our system at 60 PSI, and we have an eight-inch main pretty close to the site. Water, we just completed an expansion of a water treatment plant. We went from 22.5 million gallons a day to 32 million gallons a day, giving us quite a bit of capacity. So we've got about 12 million gallons of capacity when you look at our peak day versus what the plan is now. That took a long time. So when you're looking at speed to get service to the site, our water plant and our wastewater plant are in exceptionally good shape with capacity. That's not by accident. We met with, our board met with the city council several years ago, and at that time, I believe the mayor asked me, he was then a council member, he said, how, how often are you going to be coming to us with these 60, 70 million dollar projects? And I said, you're going to want me to come quite a lot, because that means we're growing, it means we're successful. And we're talking about a lot of money here. So hopefully, we will be coming back soon, Mr. Mayor, and asking for more money. But we have water all around the site. So we have an eight-inch main to the site, we have a 12-inch main out on Memorial Drive, and we can have water to the site in relatively short order. Constructing the tank takes a little bit of time. You know, you're looking probably at a two-year period to get, if we were to have a really heavy water user, we would want to go back to a 30-inch transmission main and then build that out to the site. And that's where a lot of those costs are coming in, when you're looking at 41 and 40 million dollars on water and sewer. Wastewater, we have a biological treatment plant located on the Tar River. Just go back to water for just a second. When we did this last upgrade, one of the things we did was work with the state of North Carolina to see what our safe yield was out of the Tar River. And that took about five years to do that. But once we had that study done, we realized our safe yield out of the Tar River is around 60 million gallons a day. So we have the capacity at our plant site right now to do two more expansions. And we can do that in fairly short order, because we did some of the preliminary engineering work when we did this last plant expansion. So we're a little bit ahead of the game on that. We know where facilities would go. The, the challenge here is going to be supply chain and availability of labor. But on the wastewater plant, we are completing the construction right now of two new clarifiers out there, which will give us some additional capacity there. We're doing some wetlands out there that will give us the, the ability, instead of discharging directly into the Tar River, to discharge into some man-made, created wetlands that we're doing out at the plant, freeing up some additional capacity. And we have adequate capacity at the plant right now. We do have a forced main that runs along Highway 11 that we can have access to. There is a pump station not too far from here that we can get access to. So getting utilities to the site can be done in fairly reasonable manner. I do think that we're in good shape here. I think those who have come before us did a really good job of building the system out and laying out a plan so that we are prepared. I've always been told that you don't want to be behind on the infrastructure curve, because you lose opportunity. You don't want to be ahead on the infrastructure curve, because it costs you a lot of money. So we try to be right at the sweet spot on that infrastructure curve, so that we're minimizing costs and having available capacity. And with that, I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, Tony.
So that's a lot to take in in a short period of time. And I can remember when I first got appointed city manager, meeting with, with Josh and with Janice, and he's like, congratulations, we also got, we also got a mega site project that we're working on. I'm like, oh, that's awesome. So I had to take that in as well. But what we want to talk about is what the next steps of this process would, would look like as we decide to, to, to take that, that next, next step. We, we heard earlier about there's a significant amount of money available at the state level to look at site development and site due diligence. And if we, if we look at that availability, it's only available for those seven sites. And it's available on an application basis. And as we talked about, there's two criteria that have to be met in order to be able to apply and be able to receive that, that funding. The applicant must either own the property or have an option to purchase the property, and it must also be zoned accordingly for economic development. So if we look at the proposed mega site, that it's currently zoned as rural agriculture, Pitt County zoning. And in order to be able to apply for, for this, this, these funding dollars, a Pitt County would need to approve a zoning request to zone the property to general industrial. However, before that, before Pitt County can consider that zoning request, the property has to have approved access to municipal sewer. So the city would need to authorize GUC to extend that sewer to the site without the annexation, so that the Pitt County could then move forward with a rezoning request. And if we look at the order of operations, we see that, again, it's the, the city having the authorization for GUC to extend that sewer, and then Pitt County moving forward with a rezoning request to rezone the property, putting the property under contract, and then move forward to submit an application for funding. So these would be a potential next steps that, that we could take collectively. First of all, we also, we, I know we've, we've put a lot of information out there, but we also want to get out there to the community and provide an opportunity to share this information with, with our residents. So we would have four public input meetings held around the north and the, and the south. And then, moving forward from that, in the April timeframe, the resolution authorizing that extension would have to go forward to the GUC board for approval. And then potentially moving forward in the May timeframe to city council with authorization, resolution authorizing the extension of that sewer. In June, it would go back to the, the county and to their planning and development commission for, to consider a rezoning request, and then potentially back to, to the county commissioners for approval in July at your, your county meeting. And then in that July-August timeframe, to actually submit an application to the state, to EDPNC for proposed funding. And it's also, looking at it this way, you know, we're not going to run before we walk. And we've talked about the need to have those due diligence, to determine what types of, to delineation of the wetlands and to do the environmental studies. That's the first step in all of this. But before we can get to that, these first two criterias have to be met. We've already have on the calendar that we would go move forward with in advertising four different input sessions. The first would be at the end of this month, on March 31st. We would advertise and have that meeting out at the Pitt County Agriculture Center. And it would, all sessions, all four of these sessions are starting at 6 o'clock. Then in early April, we would move that out to Aiden Middle to give individuals on the south side of the, of the county an understanding of what this project entails. And then back over here to Welcome Middle in April to have another input session. And then finally, a session by virtually over Zoom for those that cannot make it out to be able to, to take, to understand what this, what this process looks like. So with that, I would ask if you have any questions or comments for any of the speakers here tonight? That, we have those.
We'll go with the county commissioners. Any questions? Mr. Mayor.
Uh-huh. Councilmember Willis.
Thank you, Mayor. I was curious as to the, any money that's already been invested on the county level in preparation for the mega site as of, as of right now? Has there already been investment in preparation?
No county dollars. Can we say that the property owner has been very generous in working with us and sharing and doing some due diligence on their own? Can I say that? And, and so we have not expended any city or county dollars or state dollars to get us to this point, but we are ready to spend some money.
Put me on the city side now.
Okay. And then one other question. In terms of the expansions that were outlined with Greenwood Utilities, any, are there any expansions that are foreseen? Are any of those expansions, do we anticipate would ultimately result in increased costs for consumers? When we talk about the substation and, let's see, extending the sewer to the mega site property, I'm curious as to, are we anticipating an increase that would trickle down to consumers?
It's a little bit early to tell. We would likely not do any major extensions until we have an active project and need to get it there, other than just getting to the site. I don't anticipate getting to the site would result in a rate increase at all.
But, but still too early to tell?
It is too early to tell.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
I'm curious about one thing. They talked about building a road from Highway 11 back around to that loop. What's the impact on those residents? That's, are you going through, going around, or is it, who's going to do that? The impact on a resident? I'm concerned about a resident when you're putting that road in.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you. The, the location where we've tenderly said the road should go is on land Warehouser owns. All of it would be on land we own. So you can get the road from Highway 11 to the mega site without touching anybody else's property. So it's not, it's not expanding an existing road, it's actually, it would be a new road through the, through the.
Yeah, I heard a new road, but I was thinking about placement as it relates to the residents that's already in that area.
All right. One, one thing, part of that is looking, is the due diligence work would look at specifically where houses are, but there wouldn't be, there aren't houses in that land, because we, we own it. There are a couple of houses that would be next door. There's one house on one, each side at Highway 11, but then all the way to the site, there aren't any houses within about 1,000 feet. So there would be, there'd be, there's two houses on Highway 11.
Two houses.
Right. That, that are, would be adjacent to where that road, where we, they're adjacent to the land we own today.
But not run through the houses?
Right. Not through the. Right. Just the roads on our property.
Right. I don't know the back vision, but I was thinking about the residents, so.
I understand.
And when they're few and not a crowd, you have to argue alone, and that's what puts you in a battle.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Yes. I'd like to sort of dovetail with Councilmember Willis's questions. And I know it's too early to say, and it's not to say that it wouldn't be worth it, but it would be good to, to know and be able to talk with our constituents if it were to happen, when we talk about the utilities expansion and capitalizing, those utilities expansion. Is there a point at which it may call for an increase in rates for our consumers?
I wouldn't anticipate that based on the loads that we see at the mega sites that have been developed. So they have very significant loads which help us pay for that infrastructure. Until we know what the load is, I couldn't tell you that. I mean, there's, I just can't pull a number out of the air, and I won't do that, so.
Yeah, no, and I'm not asking for a specific rate increase. I just know that, that capitalizing projects, you got to pay for them upfront. And, and I don't know whether that would come out of a rate increase or how.
So we can do that a number of ways. We can do that through grants. We can do that through longer-term financing, like we're getting ready to issue a bond now, so that future users of that capacity are paying their fair share of it.
Okay.
So there's a number of ways to do it.
That's good. That's good. Couple of sort of literally in the weeds questions. This goes back to, I think, when you all were talking about the site itself. The site, when it's built out, I see a lot of ponds, and I love that. Is that where we're working with the wetlands? Or is, are those more like retention ponds? Or, I know it's really too early to tell, but I see a lot of ponds and green space, which is nice, but is this going to be sort of in manufactured green space, or is it kind of working with the existing green space?
It's going to be a little bit of both. Again, we're at such an early phase that this is a, a great schematic, but we haven't gone through all the wetland delineations. We haven't done all the due diligence to know exactly where some of those environmental constraints are going to be. Again, we've got a great partner with Warehouser, will mitigate whatever needs to be mitigated, but we'll try to work in the natural environment as best we can.
And, and you're right. This is way. This is way too early for that, to pin down exactly where a pond is going to be and whether it's a wetland or not. But I just kind of, you know, I love the, I love the schematic, and I love what the schematic shows. And then, looking at the building out, is there, is there a point at which, and this, again, we don't know this answer, but is there a point at which this would use all 10,000 of Warehouser's acres? I mean, or are we even there to talk about that yet? It looks like it gets built out pretty substantially.
I tell you, I think that's a vision of what this could be, is from a community perspective. If you look across the country, there is a, a trend out there to look at industrial growth surrounded by commercial and residential in a, in a, in a master developed community. Clearly, that's what we would love. We, I'd love to see Bethel benefit significantly from this, as well as the north side, North Greenwood, as well. But ultimately, I think that's something that's going to materialize over time.
Okay.
So, you know, like I said, you got to, before you can run, you got to walk. And at this point in time, if we were to move forward this, it would just be for the due diligence dollars that would allow us to delineate and determine what, what areas could be developed on, and what are some of the risks that we have out there from an environmental perspective that we do not yet know of.
All right. Super. Thank you very much. All the presentations were really well-done and very thorough, and extremely informative and very exciting for our area. That, and I just want to take a minute to applaud the people who've been involved with this so far for the vision, the work that went into putting this proposal together, or this, you know, this idea. And I think it truly could be a game changer for our community, and I'm really excited to kind of look down the road and perhaps be a part of this.
Do you have questions?
I don't have questions as much as I do comments. Number one, I'm from over here, so this is where my roots are. And I think that my biggest concern, again, great presentation, we see the opportunities for some responsible economic growth to happen north of the river. We see the opportunity for the city to, and Greenwood Utilities, to make some investments in improving quality of life, or as it relates to water and utilities over here. But I believe in social capital. And social capital starts with transparency, and we did that today. We're hosting the event today. There was a mention of public defendability, being able to defend it publicly. My ongoing and continued support, because again, I'm a country girl, I'm country and proud, right, is always going to be attached from my heart to the hearts over there in that corner, right? And so, I want to know, yes, the public engagement sessions that we have, I'm appreciative of that. How is that going to be communicated? And I know that we have set rules on how we communicate when we're doing property development. But property, but communication in rural settings is different than communication in urban settings. And so, what efforts are we going to make to ensure that all of the citizens, and, and not just the ones that are bordering this property? Because you know, north of the river, we go out to Belvoir. Even looking at the locations, like I can think of a couple of locations where I know you can get 50 to 100 people in a setting that have a vested interest in what's happening here. They are already getting more phone calls about, almost to a harassing level of offers to purchase their property and their land and things of that sort. And that has increased their concerns of, okay, where's this coming from? Why are we getting these phone calls? Why are we getting these letters? What does this mean for us? Also, as a country girl, quality of life is, is important to us. And so, probably one of the most enjoyable things for me is to sit on my patio and just listen to the wind blow through the trees. So, again, just kind of taking it back to demonstrating value for the citizens, not just bordering the property, but north of the river in general, respecting them and how it might impact their quality of life. While we were on the bus, someone talked about the hunters. My granddaddy was a hunter. And so, you know, those things, that's part of their day-to-day lived experience. And so, I want to know, how far out is the communication going to be, or letters sent, or invitations to?
Councilmember, that's a great question. I can assure you, we will do, I can't, I'm not, we're going to be able to answer directly every single option that we have right now, but we will do everything we can to extensively put this out there and get as many people engaged as we possibly can.
Will there be an opportunity for a community engagement for the people who are in closer proximity to the facility? Because this is where the impact is. And she was talking real positive about my concern.
Yeah. Commissioner Parkett-Williams, this is, this right here, these are the, these are the ones that have been set up to this point. And we will do everything we can between the city, the county, you know, working with our, our, our community leaders to get the, the word out, to, to be able to take part of these, these input sessions.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the city council? Seen none? Oh, okay.
No questions, just comments. Haven't been here all my life, and I remember in probably, that's about 1967, '68, when Burris and Welkin came here, there was a lot of talk about that was going to be negative for Pitt County. It's been there now for 50-some years, created hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of jobs for people. I know when they opened up their doors, a lot of people I knew that were older members, my family got jobs and worked there, worked there for 25, 30 years, retired. And me looking at the development of Pitt County, because I have been born and raised here for now almost 64 years, the north side of the river has faltered. We've not given it the attention it needs. The south side's developed, look at, by Pitt Community College, my aunt used to own a farm out there. Look at what it's gone into. Look at the east side of Greenwood. Look at the hospital where I used to ride many bikes at, they were cornfields. North side of the river needs something like this. This is the kind of project that done in a responsible manner can put us on map number one, and number two, provide all the amenities that the north side of the river doesn't have. Because when you develop something like this, you got to have labor, so that's jobs, really good-paying jobs. The infrastructure that some people don't have now, like water and sewer that they don't have, except for where in the ground, and the reception tank systems. Medical care, which is in great need on the east, on the north side of the river, that we don't have now. So, when you build a project like this, it's like a rock dropped in the pond, but yes, it hits in that spot where this development is that we're out of our homes, but it ripples out in a good kind of way. So, I'm, I'm excited about the project. I think it's going to be a great fit. I think everybody's doing their due diligence about it, and certainly, I hope the county and city will do our part to try and go get the due diligence money. Because I think it's going to be a great opportunity to develop the north side of the river and really give our citizens on this side, both in the city and the county, opportunities that have been lacking for so long.
And now, to our council members and to our commissioners, I hope you see here tonight that there, there has been a high level of transparency. That's why we're here. That's why we ask for both the city council and the county commissioners to come together to hear this, this unified message that we can send out to our, our community. I do believe there's been a, a great effort to make this a socially conscious project thus far, as well as environmentally conscious project thus far. And the transparency moving forward to our, our community input information sessions is very important, because we, that is, that is the reason why we're here, to have that transparency, and to be able to provide a, a nice amenity that provides for the future jobs. This is the next 50 years, I keep saying, this is the next 50 years of job growth within our community. And we want to do it in a socially responsible way, an environmentally responsible way, and that starts here tonight collectively.
Thank you.
All right. Is that it? We just, then we got the public comment period? All right. Nobody have any other comments, questions, anything? We're good? All right. Public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at the same meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated, with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who did not, who did register will have an opportunity to speak in order to register. Goodness. Individuals registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order to register until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam clerk, our first speaker.
Mayor Conley, we do not have any registered speakers.
Anyone that would like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record.
I know they didn't understand what you said. You guys speak.
I, I, I was talking to the mayor here, and I looked at what he was reading and how he was reading it down towards the table. And the general public sitting in the corner over there doesn't know what you said. I'm sitting right next to you, so turn around.
Would you like to speak during the public comment period? You can come forward and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
But they will have a time in the future.
That's right. They got plenty of time.
That's what I wanted to know.
All right. Seen none? Close the public comment period? Oh.
So, um.
Can you, can you state?
I'm curious to know what type of industries may be.
Can, can you state your name for the record, too, so she can?
Lisa. Hey, Ms. Lisa, how you doing?
I just, I'm just, I'm just curious to know what type of industries may be heading our way.
She wants to know.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you my comments, and then I would welcome any of our, our professionals out there. So, clearly, we would, we would like to concentrate on the, the industries that are our, our core target industries right now. Advanced manufacturing in the areas of pharmacy, pharmaceuticals, healthcare, as, as well as boat manufacturing. But ultimately, I would like to see us land a, an automotive plant, just like Toyota, or a, a battery plant. But ultimately, those are our, our core industries that we would hook to a track.
All right. Thank you.
So, it's not sick.
Thank you. Speak during the public comment period. Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
All right. We will close out.
Hi, 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 hi. You just give me, you just give me a bunch of grief. I'm going to stay here all night.
All right. I'm scared.
All right. Seen none? We'll close the public comment period. I guess we need to adjourn, ma'am. Hold on a second. County goes first.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you and everybody, county staff, city staff, commissioners, and city council members. With that, I'll entertain the most famous words at the end of a meeting.
I'll move.
Got a motion?
A second.
In a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor, it's on to you, sir.
I'd like to say thank you, too, to the county, and thank you to all of our partners that came here today to make today possible. It's been a great day. I think it's great for our county for us to continue to express a unified approach to economic development. So, I want to say thank you to everybody for being here. I think it's great for our, our community, and hopefully, we'll be able to get a lot of public engagement over the next several months. So, with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, seconded by Councilmember Willis. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, say nay.